Come true. Someday I'll wish upon a star, wake up where the clouds are far behind me. Where troubles melt like lemon drops, high above the chimney tops, that's where you'll find me. Oh, somewhere over the rainbow, birds fly. Birds fly over the rainbow, why then, why can't I? Ah, someday I'll wish upon a star, wake up where the clouds are far behind me. Where troubles melt like lemon drops, high above the chimney tops, that's where you'll find me. Oh, somewhere over the rainbow, birds fly. And the dreams that you dare to do, dreams really do come true.
Thank you very much.
You're watching OCA Media.
You're watching O-C-A Media.
If you're buzzed and doing this to make yourself feel okay to drive, you're not okay to drive.
We'll fix this.
And I.
Okay, it's five o'clock. We'll call to order the Village of Oregon Board for Monday, February 19th, 2024. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Fashion.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Yeah. Thank you. Oh, just a reminder, speak in the mics, please. Thank you. Item three, approval of February 5th, 2024, Village Board Meeting Minutes. Looking for a motion to approve. Jason.
Second.
And Tim, Corrections Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, Public Comparatives, Comments, Communications. Public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Otherwise, the agenda will proceed as posted. We have Mike Wunsch registered to speak on item nine A. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Wunsch. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I live at 299 North Main Street. I'm a candidate for this spring's election for Village Board, and I previously served on the board. Issues that are important to me include making Oregon a more affordable place to live, lowering taxes, implementing sustainable practices, providing a more open and inclusive government, strengthening our downtown, and advancing public transportation. But my campaign is not why I'm here tonight. I'm here because tonight the Village Board is discussing borrowing twelve and a half million dollars in 2024. Half of this debt will have to be paid by increasing property taxes, and half will show up as increases on our sewer and water bills. The property tax impact of this loan starts out small, but ramps up quickly. At its peak, repaying this debt will add $380 to the property taxes of a $320,000 home. This represents a 22% increase in the property taxes used to run the Village of Oregon. This is only the beginning. In addition to the twelve and a half million in borrowing this year, the Village Capital Improvement Plan projects borrowing 23 million next year, 24 and a half million in 2026, 15 million in 2027, and another 32 million in the three years after that. This is why the Village plans to more than double our water and sewer bills, and it's why our property tax bills will be rapidly climbing. The Village Board needs to hit the brakes on the capital improvement plan. It's too much. The Board has an obligation to the residents of this village to be fiscally responsible. With the Village planning to spend 81 million over the next four years, the Board should be looking to trim costs wherever possible. Instead, the Village Board has never said no to any item in the capital improvement plan. Everything has been rubber stamped as approved. Real life does not work this way. Real life involves choices. I may want to buy a new car, take a trip to Europe, and add a thousand-square-foot addition to my house. But after I look at my finances, I realize I'm keeping my old car. I can afford a trip to racing, and my house isn't getting any bigger. Similarly, with the capital improvement plan, some projects are necessary, some less so. I ask the Board to cancel or defer projects that are not absolutely essential. The massive spending in the capital improvement plan will dramatically raise taxes, utility bills, and rents across our village. This will occur at a time when, according to the village's own statistics, 23% of our village households are struggling to afford to stay in their home. Each one of you on the Board has said at one time or another that you support affordable housing and keeping a lid on taxes. It's time to back those words up with action. Oregon cannot build enough affordable housing to hold all the people that the village will be taxing out of their homes. The time has come to carefully consider what the village and taxpayers can afford. Thank you for listening.
Who else for public comments? No one? Thank you. Item five, approval of vouchers, the amount of $447,494.81. A motion. Tom and Jason, comments, questions? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
McDaniel.
Yes.
Van Campen.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manke.
Yes.
Kirchdorfer.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
And Fashion.
Yes.
Thank you. Item six, consent agenda. Staff recommendation, motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Six A through six F. Looking for a motion. Carleen and Tim. Questions, comments on the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, reports of committees and for discussion on our possible action. A1, Park Board. Review bids for J.C. Community Park Redevelopment Project Phase Two in a warning contract. Ace, general site construction to Yankee General Contractors Incorporated in the amount of $1,585,172.75. Contract B, building construction to Bauer Builders Incorporated in the amount of $271,000. And Contract C, site electrical construction to Nichols Electric Construction in the amount of $299,385. Park Board and staff recommendation, motion to approve this. Initially, get a motion on the table. Jason and Lynn. And I suspect, Jeff, may I have something to say on this?
Yeah. So this is, we did receive the bids back. We got, well, we felt, our last couple of bids have been coming back much, much better, which is encouraging after the last three years of some really volatile bidding markets. But yeah, we were able to, we have three contracts here, and that's just the way the project is split out. We had, I think, four bids, three or four bids for the general site construction, and have confirmed with Yankee that they're comfortable with their bid. So that was a really good price. For Bauer Builders was the maintenance building, and they're the same contractor that is doing the concession stand. So that'll keep it looking identical, which is what we want. And then Nichols Electric was the contractor that did the site underground electrical for Phase One. So there's really not a learning curve for them because they installed it, all the existing stuff out there already. This is a nice completion of the project for everything underground. Includes the playground, also an adult exercise and agility area, I think I would call it. I'm trying not to call it the adult playground because it's kind of, but it's. Lots of neat equipment out there that is just, hopefully helps some of our seniors and myself and everything, but just a nice area there. Additional ball fields, additional scoring, scoreboards, as well as some kind of needed improvements to Stotts Field. And this is all coming in really right at where we were hoping the budget amount would be, including contingencies. And the only thing left after this phase will be Phase Three, and Phase Three would be a 100% electrical project, just basically everything above ground and pulling wires through conduit to finish off the, what would be the lighting systems for the soccer fields slash playing fields and the ball fields. So I'll have on that.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions? Lynn, please.
I just wanted to give a little bit of commentary based on the conversation that the Park Board had for the larger Village Board, in specific to the Contract A. Because it was a bit lower than the other ones, the Park Board just wanted to make sure that that was okay. And the village staff has done a really nice job of checking back in with Yankee to make sure that they are fully aware of the scope and what is required in that contract, and that they're still comfortable with that number. So I just wanted to applaud the village staff for doing the extra work and making sure that they're not missing something and that we're not signing a contract potentially that is missing, you know, a part of the work.
Yeah.
Tim.
I also just wanted to comment that this was an example of a project where we did exercise significant fiscal responsibility, postponing some portions of the project in order to manage the debt that would be incurred. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. A second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll look forward to, by the way, Leanne and I and others are getting together. We have a lot of the equipment for the concession stand-in. We're looking forward to a grand opening event that we're going to be planning this spring for J.C. Park. We'll have all the signage up, the donor wall. We'll be popping popcorn and handing out hot dogs and. I think just a really neat ribbon cutting that we'll try to do out there to really celebrate completion of Phase One and obviously, you know, ongoing of Phase Two and everything. So we hope, looking forward to that this spring sometime.
Thank you, Jeff. Item eight, unfinished business and for discussion of possible action. A procurement of two Western Star Plow Patrol Trucks Dump Ads and Plow Packages in the amount of $527,861.91. Ninety-six cents. Pardon me. Don't get that wrong. Right. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Looking for a motion here. Tom and Amanda. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so this one was, and I probably just made it more confusing with my memo, but because we ordered one of these trucks and it was approved two, a little over two years ago, and we're still waiting for that. And you'll see it, if you remember, we did cancel the order with the supplier. They didn't, they understood completely. And Western Star can give us, the Western Star Group, whatever that is, the manufacturer, the supplier, can get us two trucks this year. We'll probably have one that we can even use this next year for plowing, for have that updated and everything. Just because there were some cost increases and cost changes over that time, I wanted to be 100% transparent and clear to show that these are what the vehicle costs are, and with the changes and the contracts that we have in front of us and everything. Also, I had to take out a little money because one of the vehicles, we haven't even had out on the road for the last year and a half, two years, because it's just, quite frankly, not safe. And so we had to take that money also out of what we think we would get from auction proceeds, because we're pretty sure we can't sell it at auction. We're still trying to figure out if you can sell a non-DOT-rated vehicle to, say, a farm, and they're just going to use it in the fields or something like that. But we just had to adjust everything, and this was a memo to kind of bring it all light and say this is what they're costing, and we do need them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Further questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. On item eight, the 2024 through 2028 Senior Center Service Agreement with the towns of Dunn, Oregon, and Rutland and the Village of Brooklyn. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Let's first do that. Oh, boy. Everybody move, and let's see. I'll, let's say, Tom and Carleen, I think they had their hands up. Everyone, pretty much everyone else. Martin probably wants to, maybe not. Okay, well. Sorry to wait.
No, I don't have anything. Answer any questions if you want.
Yeah, well, it's been, you know, it took a little while for this to happen, and the town of Oregon took a little longer to review, and for good reason. They want to have their attorney look at it, but they were able to approve that last, at their meeting, I think last week. So this is in place. So Amanda.
I just want to say, too, that this is, this is a really, really good thing. This serves as a model that other senior centers look at and wish they had an agreement like this. So this is a very good thing. It took a while to do, and thank you for all the work that was put in. But yeah, I wholeheartedly approve.
Okay, you want to just come down the road. Jason, you start and just work this way.
All right, so I just want to compliment everybody involved, including Martin and Rachel, and Tom, I know worked on it, and Carleen, I believe, no?
I said a lot of things.
You just said a lot of things. Because this really secures the future for our residents and for the residents in the community. A lot of these services are essential for our residents, and so I am thrilled that we are here for the creative thinking and the flexibility. I also appreciate the other municipalities who are partnering with us on this. It goes to show that, that their boards also truly value their seniors and the work that's done by the Senior Center and Rachel. So thank you. I guess I want to, I'm basically echoing what Jason just covered, but I guess a special thanks to Phil and Martin. They actually use personal relationships and contacts they had both in the other communities. And we've came, come up with an agreement that is substantially different, in a much simpler, more administratively, easy-to-work-with kind of scenario. Rachel, who provided some, a lot of, she was doing all the statistics already, and so she had them all, but it was, it was what that was all based on. And a lot of people came together on this. Everybody wanted the solution and working for a solution that worked for everybody. And I think it's a great, great team effort that was put together.
Yeah, I'm going to just echo that. I think this is just one of those things where we get to stand on the shoulders of really hard work and kind of look productive. But the reality is, is that this is a lot of work on the back end, behind the scenes, from village staff and other communities. And this is why, you know, Oregon is a really great place to be, because we take really challenging situations, and we find great solutions that are respectful and accommodating to a lot of people, and ultimately give a lot of services to people who deserve it. So, thanks.
I'm just going to say ditto, ditto. And, and thinking about the conversations that we've had behind closed doors about this and bantering around lots of ideas, there's just been some really creative thinking and a true desire to come to a solution that everybody could live with, and took a lot of patience and flexibility, and I applaud that, especially on Rachel's part, since it's funding the Senior Center, and it's, you know, not always clear what's going to happen. And so I, I'm sure that you had to do a lot of reassurance of your staff that things were going to work out, and way to go, boss. Nice job. Way to put something together that everybody could agree to.
I have nothing to add to any of that, but I equally support this.
Rachel, perhaps you might have something to say.
I would just like to acknowledge that through this whole process, every one of the board members that I talked to seemed to, I mean, every board, not just this board, but every board, did seem to value very much the ability to provide services to older adults in their communities. And I think that was very motivating to try and make something come together and happen. And I would also just like to thank all of you, because you all worked and made your brains do some backflips at times and some to try and see this through different eyes. And my special thanks goes to my staff, who, you know, kept feeling like, this will work out, and we'll just keep right on providing the services. It'll be fine. It will keep going. And they were right. And thank you to Martin, who really spent a lot of time digging in and seeing this from the perspectives of all of the different partners. So I think that made a difference. His ability to look at it from different perspectives helped us arrive where we are. So thank you all for your support very much.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Nice quarters. Item nine, new business. I understand for discussion of possible action. A, review of preliminary 2024 debt plan and process and related capital projects.
Now, after all that praise, you have to listen to me talk for a while. So we're at the point of the year here where we start getting into the debt process. So I know this is probably over half of you haven't gone through this process before, so I wanted to spend a little bit of time just explaining how it works and what it means. This will probably be on the agenda for the next couple of meetings as we finalize projects and the amount of debt that we need, and eventually through approval of that debt. So in the packet, I have a memo that's going to capture everything that I'm going to talk about, but I'll just cover some of the points here. So obviously, all of you, except Tim, who just got on, have gone through the CIP process and the FMP process, the budget process. Of course, we just finished up with approval of the budget in November, and then went through the tax process in November, December, and January. So now we're on to sort of the next big process, which is we have these projects that we identified for 2024, and we need to have sufficient financial resources to fund those projects. So that means getting cash, and that means getting debt. So what happens at this part of the year is, you know, Lisa really sits in the driver's seat of nailing this down and working with department heads and other village staff to determine the right amount of funding that we need to get through debt. Obviously, we don't want to get too much. We don't want to get too little. And so that means getting much more specific than we have previously. So there's a few things in here that I want to cover, but I want to talk a little bit about, first of all, just debt in general. So this is, I'm going to go over some of the things that we talked about, obviously, last year when we go through the CIP process. There's a few important things that we look at when we think about capital projects and debt. And there's sort of the legal requirements. There's sort of some self-imposed requirements that we have. And then there's just generally looking at what that impact looks like and deciding what's acceptable to the Board. So the first thing for debt is there is a legal limit. So in the state constitution, local governments can't have more than 5% of the total equalized value in debt. So the village is worth like $1.7 billion, and so that means we can have roughly around $90 million in debt, and we can't go any farther beyond that. That's the, that's the legal max. The village also has a self-imposed debt limit through an adopted policy, which is, we're only, we've, we've agreed that we're not going to go any higher than 75% of that statutory limit. So the legal limit you can see is this blue bar on this graph. The red is the village's self-imposed limit. And then the green is where the village is at, at least for 2023, we were at 43% of our debt limit. And then based on what we had in our 10-year capital plan and projected debt needs, this is sort of the projection of where we believe that capacity will look over the next 10 years in that capital plan. So max is out here in 2030 at 64.3%. So then the next piece of this is, okay, what is, you know, it's one thing to meet your legal limit or meet your policy limit, but what is the impact on taxes? That's a big part of the equation that you have to think about in making a decision. So this was also something that came out of the financial management plan after we updated the CIP last year in August. So this shows what is the impact on that CIP and the debt related to it. So in 2023, again, we had $1.5 billion in equalized value. We had $3.9 million in obligations for debt. And we needed $2.8 million in property taxes to be able to service that debt. And the rest of that was either made up through some other, you know, impact fees or some other. or some other source of funding that we had that could offset it. So, that means in 2023, if you had a $320,000 valued property, you paid of your property taxes, you paid $591.31 towards village property taxes for servicing the village's debt. In 2024, the amount of debt service that we had that needed to be covered by tax levy went up to 3.4 million. And that means on a $320,000 valued property, the property taxes went up $619.45, an increase of $28 from the year previously. And so then you can see what the impact is on the CIP, the 10-year CIP through that that 10-year timeframe going out to 2034. So, you can see we're we're sort of ramping up the amount of of debt service and the property taxes that are going to go into it. Of course, we have a lot of big projects in there. We have Senior Center. We have some fire district projects that are in there, street projects, that sort of thing. So, there's a lot of big-ticket items that have obviously been talked about for many, many years here that are getting prioritized and programmed into the CIP, and that's what the impact looks like. So, there's a couple of things to keep in mind when looking at at this. So, number one, there's a lot of assumptions made and projections made in this model. So, first is, this assumes that a property is going to be valued $320,000 over the next three years. Obviously, that's probably not going to be the case. It's probably going to go up. And so that will have an impact on how much taxes that it owes. The other thing that it assumes is, it very conservatively assumes how much the village's equalized value is going to grow. So, in '23, the village, village's equalized value actually went up 11.38%. This year, it actually went up 15.32%. For future years, we just assume 2% growth, which is pretty conservative, right? We've been growing over 10% for, probably since the Great Recession every year. So, what that does in terms of impact is the amount of burden on any given property might be reduced because value, the the number that you're dividing that by is growing, right? Your tax base is growing, so you're dividing that value over over more value. And now that might be due to appreciation of existing value, so we're just shifting around the burden. It might be, part of it might be due to new construction. So, we're actually adding new value, which means we're loading new, some of this burden off to new new value. So, that might shift the dynamic a little bit. So, those are all things taken into consideration. You know, a good example is recently, this last year, with our property taxes. Every entity's taxes went up. The villages, the schools, tech college, the county went up. But there were some properties whose property tax bills actually went down because their burden, their proportion from last year to this year, even with their value going up, was a smaller percentage of the prior year. So, your proportion of your property can shift based on all these different, all these different factors. So, it's really, it's kind of a moving target to determine exactly what your burden is actually going to look like on any given individual property or how it's going to affect everyone, everybody village-wide, because it's just always, there's always a bit of a moving target happening. But we try to do, we try to make as much assumptions and as much projections as we can to try to give you enough information to decide if this is a good policy decision for the board. And of course, too, looking at the, you know, these limits, again, these future out years from '25 and beyond assume just a 2% increase in equalized value. So, this percentage, if this stays the same, most likely is actually going to go down in the out years, because your equalized value is going up, which means you're creating more debt capacity. It's always a moving target every year. Your debt capacity is most likely going to go up. So, these numbers will change most likely to be more favorable. But again, we assume conservatively, because we don't want to have a rosy scenario and then it turns out not to be that case. So, that's that's just sort of a little primer on on debt and just kind of reminding us how that works and what goes into that. Now, the other thing that that I'll mention too is, so, I also have the water utility and sewer utility cash flows in here. So, this stuff here relates only to the government side of what we do. So, water and sewers, sewer utilities are separate. There are different, different requirements, different mechanisms and different instruments that are used for for debt, for water and sewer utilities. So, if we're talking about taking debt on in the water utility, that does not have an impact on what you're seeing here. This is just for the government side of things. And it doesn't obviously have an impact on what you're seeing here in terms of impacting property taxes, because it will impact utility rates. So, this, these two documents are really important for all of you to help inform you on how the CIP, the debt plan, impact and the decisions revolving around those potentially impacts future decision-making. So, with the water utility, again, this sort of assumes the next 10 years roughly incorporates the CIP into that, how much debt we need for that CIP. This shows, you know, revenues that we're making from the water utility. So, you can see up here, revenues, what we make from user rates, other revenues that we reasonably expect from from the utility, less expenses are operating, pilot payment to the to the to the village, our existing debt principal and interest that we pay, and then any capital improvements that we're paying for and any new debt proceeds. This is revenue that we're bringing in. And so you can see the balance of cash that we have in the utilities. $5 million at the beginning of 2023. And you can kind of see where the cash flow sort of sort of lies as we move forward. Now, we've talked about in the past that both the water and sewer utility have a lot of cash in in their fund right now. And so, one of the plans, as we move forward in doing some of these capital projects that have been identified, is spending down some of that cash. So, you can see some of this cash flow, you know, obviously negatives over the, you know, the first four years here, as we moved from about $5 million down to, you know, just under $2 million at the end of 2026. And so, that's okay. That's more than enough cash that that we need to operate the utility. You know, this little line here says PSC days cash on hand, $1,694. That basically means we can operate the utility with cash on hand for almost four years without making any other revenue, pretty much, or doing, you know, capital projects. So, that's more than enough than what we need. And that's occurred because we have some of these projects that we've been wanting to do that haven't been done for a number of years. And so now we're getting to the point where these projects are eating to to actually happen. And we have that actually drawing down to just under a year of availability of cash, which is is still a good spot. We have, I think, roughly 30% of a fund balance on the government side. So, we always maintain just 30% of our annual operations as a fund balance. So, having almost a year's worth of cash to to run the utilities is is really good. So, and then you can see at the top here, all of this gets run through, and then we project user rates based on this. So, we just did a 31% increase to rates that went into effect at the end of last year. That's that's what this was. And now you can see moving forward what we're looking at in the out years. And now, of course, we'll always be looking at this. We update this model every year to see where we're at. So, these are just assumptions moving forward. But again, depending on if we do certain capital projects, if we move some out, if we want to use more cash more aggressively, that can impact the the user rates moving forward. Same thing on the sewer side. Sort of nearly identical to what we're looking at. Again, it has a lot of cash. We're looking at paying that down. Of course, we have the massive sewer plant project, a $25 million project that is going to be occurring over the next two years. And that's really what's driving the cash flow in the sewer utility right now. And you can see the estimated increases in sewer rates over the next few years to try to keep up with the cost of that project and paying down the debt for that project. And the way that we, you know, I think conversations on the timing and the amounts of these percentages, I think, can be had and can be discussed when we go through this process every year. We did the 12% increase that was outlined here, just in December. But you don't want to be at a point where you don't do, if you have a major project like this, you don't do an increase, and then you find yourself six years down the line and all of a sudden you need to do 100% increase. That's less desirable than trying to knock off some percentages here and there. Again, conversations that can be had and and obviously, public policy choices that the board can make. So, that's sort of, that's how all of that feeds together. And I just wanted to make sure that I covered that, so everybody was on the same page. So, for 2024, I have this chart, the preliminary debt plan for this year. So, on the left side here is all of the projects that we had identified in the 2024 capital improvement plan. The number, the dollar amount identified that was in the adopted CIP, and then the funding source that we were going to use that was identified identified in the adopted CIP. So, again, as I mentioned earlier, when we do this, we assume that debt is going to be used for everything, just because we want to assume pretty much the worst-case scenario, so that we can see what that impact is. So, when we get to today, and we're now actually working on the cash that we need for the projects in this year's capital improvement plan, we start to look at getting more specific on how we're actually going to fund this. And so, the biggest thing is funds on hand versus debt. So, we assumed debt initially, but when we get to this stage, we really want to try to find any cash that might be available that we could use to put towards particularly smaller projects, like cars, vehicles, equipment, studies, those sorts of things. Because, you know, the best example is probably police squad cars. They last anywhere three to five years, maybe. It doesn't make sense for us to take out a note or bond for 10 to 20 years. You're paying debt service on something that's been done for 15 years, you know, and that there's a little bit of an intergenerational inequity happening in terms of, you know, property tax dollars. So, we try to do everything we can to find money that we have available to put towards those smaller cost items. Now, that's usually money left over from projects that happened in previous years. So, we have a street project, $100,000 under budget. We can move that forward and use that towards another project in a future year. It also happens through budgetary surpluses. So, last year, I think we had something like a $400,000 surplus in the general fund that typically, you know, we we typically budget pretty conservatively in our in our budgets, because we don't want to be in situations where we're running deficits. And so usually, we'll produce at least some some amount of surplus from the budget. And that usually happens because we budget for positions that aren't filled at any given point during the year. Somebody, you know, resigns, or it takes a little while to fill a position that's created. And so that kicks out some of some surplus. And then we use that to try to fill some of these projects with with cash. The other thing, and this is a little bit more unique in the last year, is investment income, which we weren't really able to count on, you know, over the last 10, 15 years. But interest rates have gone way, obviously way up in the last 12 to 18 months. And so we have, you know, a lot of cash in our bank accounts. And so we're able to produce, you know, investment income off of that, which is producing actually quite a bit. And we're able to use that to fill in some of these needs. So, this is at least just preliminarily. We're still working on this right now. And we'll get a little bit more firm over the next couple of meetings. But you can see where we've identified the possibility, or ideally, some of these projects that we will fund on hand rather than using debt. And so, you know, we projected 8.5 million as a general obligation debt for projects. That's down to 6.6 million on the government side, with about $800,000 of that being from, hopefully, where we can find some funds on hand to to fill that in. And you can see sort of my comments just to the to the right there on sort of where we're at with some of that stuff. Now, that'll come together pretty quickly here over the next three weeks. And we'll have some pretty firm numbers to to determine where that all lays. But I wanted to give a snapshot of what that's looking like right now. The other things I just wanted to point out, as I mentioned in my memo. Number one, the Senior Center facility design funding, that was sort of a big one. It was one of the reasons why the amount that needs to be borrowed is dropping. And we had a number in there, 1.5 million for design of that project, which we might may get to towards the end of this year if we keep proceeding. You know, we've been working with Tri-North. They gave an estimate that actually, we probably don't need anything more than $600,000 for that. So, that knocks, you know, $900,000 off of that. So, again, we, you know, we kind of threw a number at the wall, a high number at the wall, just because we didn't really know what to expect there. And so that takes off, you know, close to a million dollars on that that part of the project. We did have a couple of projects. Well, we did get the South Main Street project bids back. That'll come to you at the next meeting. Those came in under budget. So, we're just finalizing some of those items that need to be out to bid and making sure those numbers are are jiving with what we had in terms of our projections. One one area I wanted to point out was the water utility. Looks like some of the projects are coming in a little bit more than we had in the CIP and the the financial management plan, which of course feeds into these projections. And so I know that we're going to be meeting with Jeff and his team later this week to just really nail down those numbers and make sure that we're good, we know what they are and and we can make sure that we're making sure that the board knows what the impact of those numbers are when we go move ahead here in the next couple of meetings. The other thing I wanted to mention too was the downtown master plan. So, we plugged in a pretty low number, actually, it turns out, for for that project. We did get a lot of proposals. We got seven proposals, which is great. Some really interesting firms that put in. We're going to be working on the evaluation of those proposals here over the next week or two. But the the range of dollar amounts came in from $20,000 to about $110,000, with most falling somewhere in the middle of that. And so I just wanted to highlight that most likely that project's going to be upwards of probably about $80,000 would be around a close estimate. But again, that's one of those smaller ticket items that we want to try to fill with with funds on hand if we can. But just wanted to bring that to your attention. On that, I don't think there's anything else I wanted to cover. Again, we're, this is coming a little bit early. I don't think we had this on the meeting until maybe even the second meeting last year of March. But just wanted to get this in front of you now, just knowing that not all of you have gone through this process, so you can understand it. And if there's any questions or things that we can get to, otherwise, we're really going to, this is really going to come together kind of fast here in the next couple of weeks, and we'll have the firm numbers shortly.
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Martin, and the village staff for working on this plan, for educating board members as we come on, because it's not normal to work with the different funding sources in the government. I do work with churches, helping them be fiscally responsible. And I'm very thankful for how you and the village staff have helped the village be extremely fiscally responsible, especially with the number of generational projects that we have had in front of us, including the Senior Center, the library, fire station, utility upgrades, that while there is impact on the taxpayers, to which we are all sensitive, we, I appreciate balancing the need for services, expected services to our citizens with responsible responsible, um, fiscal management a- and keeping taxes reasonable. You, you mentioned taxes going, uh, down for a number of folks. I, I was, uh, very surprised when I saw my tax bill this year, I said, that's it? So, um, very thankful for that, um, as well. I'm thankful to my fellow board members in helping with that.
Lynn.
Um, I also will reiterate that acknowledgement. I also think it's important for anyone watching or listening or interested in this process. One of the things that I've learned in the short time I've been on the board is how fluid these documents are. That it often looks like it is set in stone, that this is the number that things will be. And as you can tell even from the narrative before this, that things change on a daily basis, um, in this world. And one of the nice things is that most of those changes are often, um, not a surprise great expense, right? It's sort of a nice surprise that things are different or that we've already anticipated it. So I appreciate the adjustment to like the, um, uh, downtown master plan. I think that's really helpful to kind of see where that's, um, needing to be adjusted. And just a reminder that these things do kind of change as we go and, um, keep the, keeping that in mind as we go.
And what else? Amanda.
Yeah, thank you for this. You know, I remember five, six years ago, looking at these CIPs and, and seeing, you know, conservative projections being a lot worse than they actually turned out to be. And we've been growing a lot above the average, which is a happy problem to have. Because if you're not growing, you're dying. I hate to say it so bluntly, but that's the way it is. The state legislature has handicapped our ability to, to raise our levy. We can only increase it by the amount of, uh, increased, uh, construction in the village. Uh, so you have to be growing, otherwise you're stuck. And, and you, you know, as costs go up, you can't provide services for your residents. We're growing, that is a fact. And yeah, uh, you know, the prices go up, but you know, our mill rate went down. Right? Like our portion per thousand dollar of home value from last year to this current year, whatever. The last couple of years went down. So we're doing our best to keep costs low. Uh, we don't control the home assessments, we don't control a lot of those things. We can't control the county taxes or the, the school board or anything like that. And from all the taxes you pay when you look at your bill, the village, the amount that goes to the village is only about 16 point, something, 0.9%, something like that. And we are consistently, we're still within the bottom third of taxes for municipalities in Dane County. So these numbers look really big and really scary, but they're not set yet, right? And they will most likely not be as extreme as this. And we are in line with what everybody in Dane County is doing and we're growing. So just for perspective, you know, this, this looks pretty good to me.
Uh, Caroline and Jason.
Just, just want to say thanks, Martin. This is a lot of detail and it's hard to understand without your narrative. So it's very appreciated because I look at this, as I'm sure a lot of people do, and they say, what? And so having your narrative to be able to walk through these numbers and understand how they all fit together is extremely helpful. Not just for board members, but for anybody who is interested. So thank you very much for that.
The, uh, uh, piece that Amanda mentioned about growth is also why I want to emphasize for anybody listening, the importance I feel in responsible growth, um, through multifamily housing, um, which allows for a wider tax base and, uh, need to plow fewer streets and mow fewer, um, verges and things like that. So multifamily housing not only creates, um, affordable housing, but multifamily housing, which I know the pla- uh, is a hot topic of conversation at planning commissions that, uh, Phil gets to go to frequently. It is very important for the future of, of the village, um, in terms of tax rate and providing services at a reasonable rate.
What else? Go ahead.
Going to make one more point.
Tim, please.
Then I'd just like to kind of echo what everybody else is saying, Martin. I really do appreciate the analysis here and the, um, the carefully calculated numbers as opposed to stuff that sort of gets thrown around when you're hanging out at Firefly or wherever else. You know, to see that the impact on a $320,000 home is $28, not some of the wild numbers that get thrown around. So, um, I appreciate the work you and your staff put into calculating all of this. Thank you.
Remembered it now. So all of that said, I know I welcome public input. You know, if there is a particular project, when people are looking at this and they say, why are we doing that now? Do we really have to do that now? Hit us up with those questions, those are valid. And, you know, we'll either explain why we think they are necessary to do in, you know, in this 10-year period. Or, uh, we can consider, you know, like moving things around a little bit. As Martin said, some of this is in flux. But, but please, uh, if there's something you, you see that really, you're like, why are we doing that? That's, you need to contact us and, and then we can talk about it.
Yeah, I just want to make two, a couple more things. So yeah, for, in terms of future planning, so the debt plan specifically addresses what we're doing this year. So when you look at this list of projects and equipment purchases, this is what will actually happen this year. We will spend this money to do these things. When you look at the out years in this 10-year CIP, so this would be from 2025 to, you know, 2032 or 33. Those are all just, that's just the plan at this point. You know, we go through that process every year. And depending on the village board, it's always changing. So it's, it can, the priorities can always change and be moved out. And of course, we always do our analysis and provide the impact, um, for what that always looks like. The other thing I just wanted to mention too, um, I don't think always gets captured, it sort of happens invisibly behind the scenes. But, um, this, this sort of ramp up that is occurring is, uh, intentional. So, uh, the way that when we go out to, to, for debt, uh, of course, we work with Ellers, our financial consultant. They help us structure the debt payments that we're going to make in all of our debt obligations. And so they, we've been very intentional about, um, not creating a huge spike with all of these different generational projects that are happening. Uh, so we've been try- ve- very careful to slowly kind of ramp it up. You know, taking off, you know, in this example, almost $50 chunks every year. If you didn't do that, you could potentially, you know, when you add a library and, or a senior center in one year and you don't structure it correctly, you could see a huge spike in debt payments. But the way that they help us sort of navigate, okay, we know we have to pay this much this year. Let's structure this year's obligation so that we're doing a big payment because we can afford it or a little payment because we want to just slowly ramp that up. So, um, you know, there's some, there's been a lot, for many years now, there's been, you know, with all of these different generational projects that have been planned, um, there's been a, a, an intention of the village staff and Ellers to very carefully kind of pluck that up slowly, uh, rather than seeing those huge spikes.
Okay, to, to be continued, I guess. Item 9B, uh, review of draft of volunteer policy.
All right, uh, so when we did the employee handbook, uh, project last year, uh, some of the feedback I got from a couple of department heads was, uh, having a, a village-wide policy on, uh, the use of volunteers and managing volunteers. And so that was a, sort of an idea that came out of that. And then actually came up in the discussion when we had our village board strategic planning in, uh, July, August last year. And, uh, so it actually made its way into that plan as a goal. And so, uh, I've been working on that and in the packet is a draft of that policy. Not looking for any, uh, action tonight. I still have, uh, some comments and some feedback from, uh, department heads that I need to, to work in and consider. But, uh, I just want to make sure that this gets in front of the board and, and if there's any feedback or, um, if we're not going in the right direction, uh, that I'm aware of that now. Uh, I think the biggest things with this kind of policy is, uh, of course, we have departments that do wildly different things. Uh, and so the use of volunteers varies, can, can vary significantly. And so having a village-wide policy to try to capture, um, uh, you know, the use of volunteers and have a one-size-fits-all policy is pretty challenging. So, um, this policy does kind of two things. Number one, it sort of sets minimum standards for policies in particular. You know, we don't want volunteers working in confined spaces or, you know, using, uh, you know, equipment, village equipment.
Front-end loaders?
Right, front-end loaders, you know, we don't, you know, that's a pretty easy one to, to policy out right there. We, um, uh, just incident reporting in general, you know, that should be happening on a fairly standard basis. Uh, involvement in financial transactions should be happening through our, our financial policies. Supervision, it, you know, should be pretty much general through, throughout the village. A waiver, a, a liability waiver should be universal. Uh, but beyond that, uh, you know, we have the senior center who uses volunteers every day and has volunteers that they have for years and years. They have kind of a, a regular roster. And then we have volunteers, you know, for example, this last year, we had a tree planting, um, uh, event that Public Works put on. Those people showed up for a one-time thing and they may never volunteer for the village again. And so trying to capture that, um, is, is sort of difficult. But just trying to create a framework for the departments to, to work within and then have some of these minimum standards. So appreciate any feedback, um, or any questions. Like I said, uh, there's a few things that I know I've gotten back from department heads I need to work in there. But, um, just want to get this in front of you so you know that it's coming.
Amanda.
Yeah, I think this is, uh, fantastic. I'm glad we're doing it. I, I welcome the volunteers, the Eagle Scout projects, all the, the things that, that happen. Because that means that's not village dollars paying for that project, uh, or maintenance, as it may be in some cases. That's, it benefits everybody, so I'm glad we have a policy that, um, that allows us to do that safely. Thanks.
Tim.
I had a, a couple of questions. There are a couple of things that I noted, like a background check. If you have a bunch of people coming to volunteer to help plant trees on a given Saturday, are we background checking all of that typically or not?
No, um, and I was, I was sort of careful to, um, describe when we would use a background check. The language I have in there now is if they have contact with vulnerable individuals, such as those who may be susceptible to physical or mental harm or influence, um, should undergo a background investigation. So, um, you know, for, for those situations where there's direct supervision, and they're not really necessarily going to be in a position of concern, um, you know, going through that process isn't, isn't necessary. Now, of course, in senior center, that might be a little bit different. You know, we have vulnerable individuals, um, that we're dealing with. And so there may be some volunteers who are going to be put in situations where we would want to know that they've been background checked and we have that information.
All right, and then on the, um, on the waiver of, uh, liability, it talked about the volunteer needing to waive, you know, release liability on hazards. But I didn't see anything in there about the village's obligation to notify about any hazard they might be up against. I think there was some mention of chemicals, but other than that, nothing about other hazards they might face. And just as a general statement, it'd be good to say, if we know of a hazard, we're going to point it out.
Yep, yeah, and the, the, uh, the orientation pr- process in the, the policy is, is supposed to do that. You know, there is some information in there. There's a handout that identifies some of the more broader categories, uh, of, you know, safety and liability. You know, just general safety, drug and alcohol, workplace violence, hazard, you know, the right to know law, bloodborne pathogens, harassment, discrimination. That form should be handed out to, um, volunteers when they are volunteering, when they're being orientated to be volunteering. But it also will be specific to how the volunteer is going to be used. That might, uh, you know, not all those things might apply, like in a one-time tree planting event. But sometimes they might apply at the senior center. So the policy is sort of written to be, you know, a complete understanding of the conditions of volunteering. So, you know, departments should identify what those hazards are, and they should be making them aware of them. So it's, it's putting out the departments to, to have a comprehensive plan in place. They're informing the volunteers of what's going on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Martin. Also to be continued, I guess. Item 9C, review draft revisions to priorities in the tax incremental financing policy.
All right, uh, so. Couple meetings off. All right, so this one is, is kind of similar to the last one. So we're working on, uh, some revisions to our TIF policy. Again, this was, there's actually two goals in the, the village board strategic plan from last summer, uh, related to this. And so I'm looking to make sure we're on the right track here and get some feedback. So the village has, uh, a TIF policy, uh, which is the purpose of, the primary purpose of that is, uh, if a, if a development project wants to, uh, get a TIF incentive of some kind, uh, this policy sets, uh, the process for how we do that. Sort of this standardized the process, so there's an application, there's, uh, you know, times that they have to get in front of the village board. There's some financial analysis process, so it really lined that all out so everybody can be on the same page. Uh, and then the second thing that it does is it establishes goals and objectives of the village board for how it wants to use tax increment financing. Uh, and so we didn't have, the village didn't have this previously to, to the policy. So, uh, the, the handbook itself, so it has a little bit of background information on what is TIF, different types of TIFs, um, the, you know, the creation process, eligible costs, ineligible costs. There's just sort of a little handbook on, you know, there are some developers who, they know TIF, they understand it. But there are some people who come and they, they are aware of it, but they don't know exactly everything about it. So this is really easy to just give this to them and then they can read it and try to understand what, what it's all about. So there's the handbook portion of it, and then there is a map showing all of our, our districts. And then there's an extra, there's the actual policy, which has the process and the goals and objectives. And then there's also an application process. So, uh, as I mentioned, there is two goals in the strategic plan about, uh, amending the TIF policy. And those two goals, uh, number one, related to, uh, sustainability. So we have, sorry, I'm scrolling. So in the current handbook, we have these two, among other things, we have these two, uh, goals and objectives, which is, um, related to housing. You know, whether the proposed tax increment district or project would incre- increase the availability of, of a range of workforce housing options, including affordable housing. And then whether the proposed, uh, district or project would include sustainability measures that will promote a healthy environment and reduce the impact of climate change. So that's, that's what's written in there. So the, the purpose of, of these goals and objectives, and this was discussed by previous village boards, was, uh, to convey what was important, uh, for a potential project. But not necessarily to filter out a- any project that didn't have these things. So, uh, you know, the example I'll give actually is the project out on the North Main Street by, uh, the cemetery. Adam Coyle's, um, multifamily project, those are market rate apartments. Those are market-rate apartments. This policy was in place when that project came forward. And it, it, it at least prompted the discussion about why is there not affordable housing in the project? And part of the discussion was, well, the developer that came forward doesn't do that, right? It's a, it's a whole world that you're getting into when you're getting into affordable housing. So that's number one. Number two, there was some environmental remediation on the project. It's an old auto repair property. So this was seen as a, a nice project to facilitate that remediation of that environmental cleanup. And then the third piece was, it's right on the village's entryway. So it's a really nice-looking project. It was really going to, to improve the, the appearance and character right when you come into the village, which is a priority of, of the village's comprehensive plan. So there were some of these offsetting factors that kind of went into the village's decision to provide a TIF incentive for that project. So these things are in there not necessarily to filter out a project, but to try to prompt a conversation of, this is what we'd like to see. But if not, we need to talk about why we would do this without this. Because, and ultimately boiled down to the, the board felt that they should be able to review all the project. You don't want projects being administratively filtered out. There could be some desirable project here that has all these different factors that the board might like. And you would want to have that discussion. So with the couple of goals from the strategic plan, I've been drafting some amendments to the policy related to, sorry, went past where I was going to talk. Sustainability and, I'm sorry.
They're red.
Kill me when you're leaving.
Just look away. Page 124. So there's two, these two goals here. So we talked about last July when we, we did the planning process. So one was, we wanted to expand the language about sustainability. So we just completed the sustainability plan. There's a lot of good stuff in there. And it would be great to capture that stuff and put it into the plan to better demonstrate what we would be willing to prioritize or fund in terms of a TIF incentive. So that was one thing. Second thing was, we had a good discussion about senior housing and affordable housing. And we ended up talking more about accessibility in housing. And so one of the goals that ended up in the plan was, could we amend the TIF policy to incentivize accessibility in, in, in projects, whether they're housing or not housing? And so those were the two things that got into the strategic plan. Now, scroll again.
Page 125.
Page 125. There you go. So this is what drafted to address those two goals. So where we had those two sort of brief statements before, this has been expanded into this red stuff here. So did some work on the housing statement. So you kind of had that brief statement about workforce housing and affordable housing before. Amended that statement to, to say what are the proposed tax increment district or project would provide a wider mix of housing type, sizes and costs throughout the village, including but not limited to affordable, low-income workforce accessible and/or older adult, adult housing to sort of capture better some of the more nuanced phrases in, in the housing market. Then accessibility. Whether the proposed district or project would provide accessibility features that accommodate all stages of life and all abilities and addresses the needs of individuals with specific disabilities and or capabilities. And so there's two pieces to this that I included. One was actual design features in, in the project. So we're talking, you know, very specific things like zero-step entrances, wired doorways, positions of light switches, lighting, assistive technologies, all of that sort of stuff. So again, we're really targeting, it could be older adult housing, it could be, you know, housing for people with disabilities and really making that statement of, this is what we care about and this is what that means. The second piece of that is supportive services for accessibility. And we actually had this on North Point's project on 249 North Main. They're providing some supportive services for people who are going to be in that, in that, in those units. I can't remember what, what's that, was it?
I think they use Lutheran social services for most of their buildings that are around the state.
Yep, so I wanted to try to capture that. That would be something important to us and something we would prioritize in a, in a TIF incentive. And then lastly, sustainability. So again, we had that really brief statement in the current policy. So now taking the sustainability plan and then including all of the main headlines that were in the, in the plan. So energy, water, land management, waters, waste and sustainable materials, transportation and community sustainability. So when we say we value sustainability, here's what we actually mean. And here's what that could look like in the project. So of course, energy, EV chargers. I think North Point is putting EV chargers in the project under construction over here. So that would be, you know, a good example of that. Water, you know, a lot of it deals with stormwater, land management, you know, deals with a lot of native vegetation and trees, waste and sustainable materials, talks about environmentally sustainable building materials, transportation, bike connections, things of that nature. Again, vehicle charging stations. And then community sustainability is kind of a broad category. But things like, does the project increase local food production? Maybe it's a commercial business that's coming to the village. Or it's purchasing or has a partnership with a business already in Oregon. It's purchasing some of its materials locally, that sort of thing. So again, it's not necessarily prohibiting a, a project from coming forward that doesn't have any of these things, but is doing a better job of saying, here's what we care about and this is what that means. And so if you come forward with a project with some of these things, you're going to be received probably better. And I know we talked about too, that, you know, some of these things add cost to projects. And obviously developers want to not have added cost to their projects. So they can look at this and say, well, I could do a project cheaper and it's TIF incentive would probably, that I'm requesting would be less. But I'm willing to do X, Y, and Z in here and I need to ask for more. And as a village, maybe we're, we're okay with that. This achieves some objective that we want and we're willing to give you more in order for you to put these features in the project. So I think that covers it for now. Just wanted to get, again, feedback and any questions that you have. Make sure that we're on the right track with this. And if we are, then this one's probably pretty close to being approved at the next couple of meetings.
Okay. Carly.
I think this is a really incredibly tangible example of how when we talk about the things that we want to have happen, they can turn into real policy that can actually impact what really happens versus just blowing hot air. And so I commend Elise, I'm sure you had input in this, maybe a schmink. And Martin for putting this together. It's remarkable and much appreciated. I, I can't.
You gotta go?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's understandable. Amanda.
Yeah, this is fantastic. I love how spelled out it is and it gives us a starting point for negotiations. And that's, you know, what, what we want for sure. The, I just had a question. If a developer comes with a project that doesn't have any of these things and whatever, like, do we have like a list of resources that we provide them with to say, hey, you should look at this focus on energy project here? You should do this thing here. And like, I assume that we, we have that discussion with them and we, somewhere there's a list of resources for developers who could come, maybe even on our website, that said, hey, we should look at these things. Is that part of the process we're putting together for the website to lead them through that and all? I, I don't know, that kind of.
Typically what happens is when we get approached, I think the first thing Elise does is gives them the handbook, right? Here's, here's the, if they're asking for it, here's the handbook, this is what it's all about, here's the process, here's the goals and objectives we have. And then usually there's some discussion between developer and, and staff. You know, I don't know that there, we have, I mean, if we're aware of certain things, I'm sure we have those conversations. But I don't know if there's like a definitive list of, you know, here's this grant over here or this grant over there.
Yeah, no, definitely, I mean, taking all ideas and suggestions for the new website have a lot of content I think we want to add to that. But, I mean, each of these projects has been so different. And also kind of the developers' experience and sort of, you know, whether they have more of a template for kind of these of the services we offer or, you know, where we have some flexibility or maybe new to this type of development. And so we're kind of an open book in terms of what we can accommodate here. But yeah, things like, you know, we just learned of a composting service that's in the area that actually serves multifamily developments. And so said, you know, I'm kind of on a firsthand basis with, you know, all the developers that have done recent projects in the village. And that would be kind of an easy thing to at least, you know, suggest to them, helping that connection and whether that's a cost that they, you know, incorporate into the rent or just a service they provide and provide some space for, you know, the compost bin and residents have the ability to have that within the building. You know, that's kind of a, a really easy thing where it's not anything additional that the village has to do. But again, these are, these resources are out there. And yeah, but I mean, again, each project's different, but have a lot of those ability, you know, we have a lot of good connections with the county, you know, Sustainability Office, Housing Office, all those things too. So always doing a lot of connecting people to whatever they might need in terms of the project. You know, like Lake Stones Prairie Brook project, that was their first low-income housing tax credit project, their first affordable housing project. And they did that, one, because they love working with the Village of Oregon and we had a good working relationship with them. But two, they knew it was important to us. And so they were willing to kind of do the, do the homework they needed to do and have a really steep learning curve. I'm not sure if they're going to do another project like that, but they, they made it through. And thankfully, you know, everything kind of worked out well with the timing, interest rates and when they were able to start construction. But, you know, we helped, you know, allow elders to, to get them the resources they needed to make sure they got through all those hoops and were able to, you know, be eligible for all the, the grants and tax credits that they were able to get.
Just one quick follow-up. I know we can't control too much what sustainability measures or, or accessibility measures go into projects that don't ask us for TIF because it's private property and all that. But do we have a place where we can strongly encourage people that are building, even if they're not asking us for money? Like just a list of resources? I would like to see that on our website, just someplace so that, hey, are you considering building something? Here's some resources to make it sustainable and accessible. And that these are the things, we, we want our village to be that way. They don't have to do it again, but it would be nice if that resource was available.
Tim.
I guess I would be skeptical of any developer that came in with a project and was like, where would I look for sustainability stuff? It's 2024. They, they need to know what they're doing with this stuff and they're running into it in every community they go to. So the idea that we need to educate them on that, I, I don't think is true. When something new comes along, like the, the compost for multifamily housing, great, you share that. But to think that they're going to start with us and go, huh, I wonder what, I wonder what sustainability looks like in building? I mean, they're, I'd be worried about the quality of the building they put up, frankly.
Well, and, and just, I, I agree, it may not be education, you know, educating the, the builder about what's out there. But it's a way of letting them know that we're serious about this. I mean, even if you're building single-family homes, are you really going to build single-family homes today that aren't solar panel-ready, if not having actual panels on them? Like why, why is that a thing? You know, like we should be automatically doing these things. So when I see a developer come in and is like, oh yeah, we didn't, we don't have solar, we don't have that. Are we really sure it's because they don't, they, they, they can't afford it? Or is it because they don't know about which resource to use? I mean, if we have it up there, it's available for everybody. And then all the developers have a shot, whether they're new developers or they've been around for a while. I mean, it can't hurt to make it available.
Okay. Anyone else?
Say to, to that end, you know, that could be a good project for the Sustainability Committee. You know, maybe there is some sort of package of information that could be compiled on, on resources that we're all agreeable to and we can have out on the website and available.
Talk to Kathy Kuntz.
Kathy Kuntz, yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I guess I would, I would, I don't see it as an educational element, as a informational piece of what is important to us. And I guess I would, from that standpoint, I would, would endorse the idea of having that kind of information available or provided in our website.
Okay, to be continued again. Yeah, okay. 9D, update on Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority, new loan programs and village eligibility.
All right, this is the last time I'm talking tonight.
Three minutes.
So again, this was something that came out of the board's strategic plan. So last summer, there was a pretty substantial housing legislation that was passed by the state legislature, creating some new loan programs for affordable senior and commercial conversion housing programs to be run through WIDA, the Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. And so last year, you know, when we were going through the, the strategic plan process, we didn't know too much about what these programs were going to look like. So we captured a goal in there about, okay, let's make sure that we were aware of them and we assess them and make sure that we are competitive for those, for those programs once, once the information is known. So WIDA's been rolling out these programs over the last few months. And Elise and I actually attended a really quick seminar at, at WIDA a couple of weeks ago, presenting on these, these couple of programs. So there's three new loan programs. Vacancy to Vitality Loan, Restore Main Street Loan, and Infrastructure Access Loan. And then there's also a existing loan program that's, was modified as part of the legislation. So in the packet, I have just a handout that WIDA had on their website related to what local governments need to know about these new loan programs. So there's, there's really three. So first and foremost, local governments do not apply for these grants. Like we're not, we're not an eligible entity to receive these grants. These are for developers and property owners. But, but local governments do play a part, kind of a passive, behind-the-scenes part in making sure that developers and property owners can be eligible for these grants. So there's a couple of things that local governments have to do. Number one, and number two, which we just did in December, so we're, we're right on here. But you have to make sure that your housing element of your comprehensive plan was updated within the last five years. And you have to make sure your entire comprehensive plan has been updated within the last 10 years. Obviously, we're good there. We just did our update in December. So those are easy ones. The third one is a little bit squishier. So this is, and actually I think I can, can capture it a little bit better up here. So you, the municipality has to have reduced the cost of housing by revising zoning ordinances, subdivision regulations, or other land development regulations to increase development density, expedite approvals, reduce applicable fees, or reduce parking building or other development costs with respect to the eligible project on or after January 1st, 2023. So that's a really, it's a nebulous requirement. But there isn't, and, and this was one thing I wanted to learn when we went to WIDA the other week, there isn't really a definition of performance for this requirement. You just have to demonstrate one thing. And it can be specific to the project or a. can be a change that affects all potential projects. So thinking about that, the village is actually really well-positioned to meet that requirement, because we already have some, some things in place. Number one, we have our planned development zoning district, which already has a process to create flexibilities in developments, specifically density, so increased density. But also, you know, there's other zoning requirements that can be adjusted in that process that could potentially have the effect, the desired effect that this is trying to achieve. The other thing is, we have, of course, impact fees for developments. And so if a project is for low-cost housing, we already have a process that a developer can go through to get those impact fees reduced or eliminated. So really, any kind of housing project that could potentially come forward and qualify for these projects, there already is something in place where we could pull on to meet number three, if needed. So, of course, we are working on, we have some zoning ordinance amendments that we've been working on that may also have a positive impact, and then we're working on our, our land and development applications as well. So I think for the purpose of these programs and the, and the goal that we kind of set out in the Strategic Plan, I don't think that there's really anything for us to do at this point. I think we're already there, we're already positioned to take advantage of them. Now it's just, is a matter of, is there any potential projects that could materialize in the Village of Oregon? The, the other thing, and this kind of goes back to maybe a little bit of the conversation at the last thing, and the last item, and a note I just wanted to make here in my memo was, you know, the, these projects and the legislation overall was really intended to get housing happening, like, get barriers out of the way, get approval processes out of the way. We need housing now. I think we just said 140,000 housing units are needed in Wisconsin, like, now, basically. So the whole goal is to really get these projects in, you know, in the ground shovels going, and particularly on these projects, affordable workforce and senior housing projects. And so, you know, when we think, we got, we got to be careful when we talk about, like, sustainability, and, you know, how does that ma, mesh with getting these projects moving forward quickly, and making sure we're not, you know, creating barriers unintentionally, or costs unintentionally, that, you know, some of these projects are, no doubt, there's going to be an increase in the amount of projects coming from these programs, and shopped around to Dane County communities, for sure, and everywhere throughout Wisconsin. And so, you know, if we have some barrier, some limitation that sets us apart from, from other communities, you know, our ability to be competitive for these grants is going to be, going to be challenging, because they can just go down the street and find a different community that can do it. So when we think about, yeah, additional requirements in, in development, we just have to be careful about goals and objectives of increasing housing and housing types versus goals and objectives for things that might get in the way of that. And that might be sustainability, because that does add cost and expertise for some developers.
Tim?
One thing about that is, because this is aimed primarily at conversion of existing buildings to housing, right?
There, there, the one program is designed for that specifically, so that, here's the...
I took control back, I'm sorry.
You were wrapping up here. So, where do you want me to go? So, page 141.
Okay.
So there's where it describes the three pro, the three loan programs. So the one is specific to conversion of commercial properties to housing, the main street one is for rehabs of rental housing over commercial space, and then the infrastructure access loan is, is, could be for any, any affordable, new, brand-new affordable housing project.
Okay. Well, in terms of conversion, I would say that there's some value to converting a piece of property to something else from a sustainability standpoint, instead of tearing it down and rebuilding it. That, that's preserving a lot of existing materials, so.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Martin.
Thank you.
Relax now.
Yep. It's up to you, your report.
See, item 10, reports of village officers, department heads. Reports of village officers, department heads, consultants, information only, no action by the village board will be taken. See reports in the meeting packet. The first item is 10A, village administrator report.
Just say, I'm going to be on vacation next week, so if you need anything, you can contact Candy.
I'm glad he spoke at the meeting. Covered it all.
10B, director of community development report, housing afforded report for 2023, which was in our packet. Elise?
This is our, I think, fourth year of doing our affordable housing report. This is a state mandate, what my Grace liked to call unfunded mandates, right, from the state, to put this together. But thankfully, we have a really great template from Vandewall from a couple of years ago, so go through and do updates every January. But communities greater than 10,000 population are required to do this report. So updates on, you know, number of plaques, billing permits, all of our fees, things like that. I won't go through all of this, since I know it's been a long meeting, and it's been in your packet. But again, we continue to see very low vacancy. I think page 157 of the packet has a lot of the, the data. This is kind of what takes the most time to update, just checking census data and things like that, too. But residential vacancies, this is kind of combined for rentals and owner-occupied, but it's just under 4%. Usually, we want to see at least 5% for kind of a healthy housing market. And another point, kind of about halfway down the page, but January 24, we saw that the average sale, average price of a home for sale is about 562,000. That's about 31% higher than the median home value, which is about 383. So again, high demands, low vacancy. There's a lot of people moving to Dane County, I've said this a lot of times before, I think this is still accurate, but about one in every three people moving to Wisconsin is moving to Dane County. So we can't just expect that all the other communities are going to take that burden, and people want to live here for a lot of reasons. A lot of people want to just live closer to where they work, and they might be commuting at further distance, and this is a more convenient location, too. So continuing to see a lot of projects coming away, so that all kind of makes sense. But, and like, kind of in the middle there, there's a lot of things about our fees and review processes, and, again, we already have a lot of things in place, but like Martin said earlier, we are, we're in a good place now with our comp plan being updated, to keep moving some zoning text amendments through, to kind of update our zoning code, and make sure that we're, we're following through a lot of our goals from the comp plan, and making things easier, expediting the review process, while also, of course, maintaining quality projects and thorough reviews. And then we will be doing overhaul this year of our kind of planning commission-related applications, to make them easier to understand, and then the fee structure as well, to make sure that we're not creating barriers for people doing, you know, small projects like zero lot line CSMs, but that we're also protecting ourselves for the bigger development projects, too. So keep your eyes peeled for a lot of work on those things to come later this year. But happy to take any questions on the report, otherwise it's on the main page of our website. And thanks to Candy for getting that up quickly.
No problem.
Questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Elise. Item 10C, senior center director, Dane County meal site inspection, 2024.
Just an opportunity to shine a light on the senior center's meal program. We served 12,212 meals last year, which is about 50 meals for every business day. It's an opportunity to say thank you to our staff and our amazing crew of volunteers that make sure those meals get handled safely and get delivered to people promptly. If you had a chance to look at the couple of pages that follow the memo, you get some idea of what the county's expectations are with regard to food safety. What I couldn't provide to you, because it was full of confidential information, is about four more pages of spot checks of records that they do for people, so that if somebody is getting a particular kind of meal, they're going to follow up and make sure that that's actually what's being delivered to them, that's what's being ordered for them, they, how we track donations, how those funds go back to the county, all of those things. So the meal program involves a lot of people at the center, and I'm just, it's, it's not easy to get a demerit-free inspection, so I just wanted to congratulate them and make you aware of the accomplishment that the staff and volunteers achieved.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Sorry. Go ahead, Amanda.
That's impressive. I just have to say, like, to be, you know, to find no areas of concern, to, to get that kind of a review when there's a lot of moving parts, good job.
Tom?
I guess this is a reflection of managing of volunteers and the, all the people involved. There's an awful lot of places that this could go south, and things that could happen. And just a special thank you to Rachel and, and all the staff that, that manage those volunteers. There's, there's, there's a mass of people over there. I don't think, anybody says, where are the volunteer opportunities in, in Oregon? They, they need more. They will take more. Rachel's done a fantastic job of managing that and getting those people into place, and getting all these checkmarks checked is, is a big deal. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Item 10D, finance director report, billing permits, impact fees, and connection fees collected, January 2024. Let's see, Elise is not here, but any questions, maybe other staff members can answer them? There are none. 10E, police chief report, revisions to victim witness assistant policy to reflect new accreditation standards.
Yeah, I'll just briefly speak to this. Essentially, it's on, on page seven of the policy, but we added in the witness rights. That's per state statute. It's something that Wiley had recognized and wanted to strengthen in a standard, and so we followed suit, and that's what you see in the policy there. Happy to answer any questions.
I just want to comment, I thought it was really well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, item 11, announcements in miscellaneous business. A, announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events, and miscellaneous business. Village board members will provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur. Tom?
I would remind village board members that they received an evaluation form, and, and staff, department heads, I've received, too. And I'm, I'm hoping that we have a week to get those in, so that I have time to accumulate them and have them at the next board meeting to discuss and close session. I, I've just acknowledged that I'm, I haven't got mine in either, but...
So the bar's pretty low.
But I do appreciate it if you would get those in. There's been a couple of questions that people have had a hard time, and if, if you really don't feel it applies, or you really can't answer it, just mark it not applicable, and we'll deal it in the scoring. And I'll try to get that accumulated for everybody at that next meeting. Appreciate everybody's time and effort into it. I think that it's, it's a good and worthwhile task, and kind of a little bit of a timeline to get it done.
Amanda? Am I allowed to just ask a procedural question? Do you, do you want the, do you have a preference for digital or handwritten, to how you'd like those back?
I would prefer digital, because I can cut and paste with digital, whereas handwritten, I'm rekeying everything, and I can rekey, but, you know.
Yeah, I think when I sent it, I sent it out in Word, so you could, you could fill it in.
Amazing.
Anybody else for announcements, comments? Okay. Item B, future agenda items, this item gives village board members the opportunity to place topic on a future agenda for discussion and/or potential action. Anyone? There are none? Item 12, closed best, closed session business discussion and/or possible action. Under Wisconsin statutes, 19.85 sub-ones, they'll be deliberating, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investment of public funds, or conducting other specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, attendance is limited to the village board, and it's discretion, any necessary staff, other officers, and other individuals whose presence is necessary for the business at hand. Item A, school board resource officer, Oregon School District, we need a motion to Jason. And Amanda, this is a roll call vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Kurt Torfer?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Bashan? Oh, she's gone, that's all right, sorry. Higgins?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
And Manki?
Yes.
We are in closed session, thank you.